One nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds for all. Please be seated.
Mr. Rubin?
Yes, Mr. Rubin?
Have you read it before?
Read what? Have I, have I, uh, yeah. I have, you know, once or twice short. So, um... I may need help because we have changes on this one, but yeah.
The first item on the agenda is public comments on agenda items. A total of thirty minutes is set aside for public comment at the beginning and end of the meeting. The maximum time allowed for any one speaker is three minutes. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting are limited to items on the agenda. If you wish to speak about something not on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Each persons who wish to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting must state their name and the specific topic about which they wish to speak. As speakers must limit comments to issues appropriate for public discussion, complaints about student discipline, specific student issues, or personnel must not be addressed during public comment. If you have any questions related to those things, or if you want to ask a question and, you know, don't want to come up to the mic, at the end of the meeting, the central office staff is available, as are the school board members, for you to come up and speak to us individually. Also, we are working right now for a program to put the public comments and answers to question, public questions and answers on the website, and Mr. Carrion will be letting us know more about that when it's finalized. So there will be that coming, if you're better communicate with the public. Thank you. Anyone wish to speak?
Good evening, Board of Education. Superintendent and community, thank you, President. That was my first for agenda items. When is the public going to receive questions, answers to their questions? I thought that the resolution that was passed was that the board would be responding to the questions of the public, and that would be part of the following meeting's agenda, where the board would be responding to questions from the community and not posted and read as a question and response. So maybe something changed with the popularity on that. Agenda item 5.01. Since our CPA is here, could you please explain why the district has not used zero-based budget increments in preparing the year's budget? I'd like to know if you've had any discussions with this administration or previous administrations regarding this basic process in order to help reduce wasteful spending. Last, agenda item 7.02. This item needs to be voted down. I'd like the board to explain the reasoning behind this. If you vote yes, that will basically affect, and will have an effect on existing committee bodies. If all three board members who sit on said committee do not show up for a meeting, then no vote can be taken, and there can be no meeting. If the committee is established to present the plan, then three of all board members will have to participate in that committee for a majority vote. Even if the public votes as a member of a committee, it does not matter, because the board has the final say on anything. These policies already exist. To do this, in my opinion, is just another slap in the face for the committee. I wish it was reconsidered. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Miggots, I'm resident at Poughkeepsie, and I also would like to speak regarding the role of community members on board committees. And there are three things that, like that, with this one's communication. We've already heard in the past how members of the Wapentures community feel cut off from communication from the board, and we hear people bringing this up frequently at the microphone. I know that there's been efforts made to try to change this, and so far we haven't made progress. So it's very good that we have community members on the committee, so that board members can receive their input, and they can actually receive input from board members. Second is transparency. One of the reasons why people want to participate on board committees is so that there is increased transparency in the process, but I believe that may have led to a problem with some of the committees. I know that there may have been some issues that have led to this resolution, and one of the reasons for that could be confidentiality. I know that in the past, sometimes while a committee was in the process of studying a very large problem, members of the committee trying to keep things transparent have leaked on social media some of the things that were discussed, and it came down as being presented to the public as actual decisions having been already made. And I really think that something like that can be addressed by starting out committee meetings, letting people know about confidentiality and how everything is to progress. Right now, I'm serving on the Smart Schools Fodak Committee, and I haven't discussed anything with anyone from our preliminary stages. Example might be something really outlandish is that if we decided that this money could be used for something like, in the technology, putting up brand-new scoreboards at John Jay and catch'em that had jumbotrons and everything else, and we told people, and that happened to the media, you'd be hearing, or out into social media, you'd be hearing from people, "How can the school board make that decision? How are they making this decision?" And people saying, "Oh, this is the greatest thing, they should do it." It's not the place of people to put things out, but rather than punishing everyone who wants to participate by taking away a voice, maybe we should just clarify for people at the beginning what the parameters are. I think that if the board does go ahead and adopt this, it will decrease interest in participation by members of the community, it will increase suspicion and alienation by people who already feel cut off from board decisions. And the cynical may even say, "Why not just add another board member to the committees and then committees, and then all decisions can be made behind closed doors in committee rooms." So please consider thoughtfully as we discuss this resolution. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public? Board comments? Mr. Lumia?
He also say I'm semi-glad to be back.
Welcome.
Anyway, just a quick announcement. This is, uh, the board received a packet from the superintendent, and I think the community should know. The Arlington Center School District has officially changed over to a new Cisco VLP phone system, similar to Ron's phone system. As part of this process, that migrated all of that dial tone service to the same data circuit our district uses. Since we are sharing the same circuits, we can essentially split the cost fifty-fifty with Arlington. As a result, Wapentures will see a reduction in the dial tone charge of savings of almost forty thousand dollars on an annual basis, thanks to the district, the district collaboration. So I'm glad that the superintendent has taken this initiative, and we'll be saving forty thousand dollars, a significant saving. So, thank you, Superintendent.
I took this under away.
Any other board comments? Mr. Rubin?
Thank you. Well, I had the, I had the pleasure of making a couple of school visits. I had the opportunity to go, not during a game, it was during the day, to John Jay High School, and I'm pleased to say that the appearance, from what I saw, the appearance of the sign was, it was a tremendous improvement. There were parts of the sign that were bent and vandalized, that has been taken care of. I understand from you, Madam President, and from you, Superintendent, that the workings of the sign were vastly improved at the football game, and that's a great thing to know. Had the opportunity to stop, to stop off at Fishco Plains Elementary School. They were featured in a Bosse's calendar, there was a picture of them, and the principal there was very happy to see that circulated amongst the staff. There were a number of Bosse's meetings that I went to, a couple of Bosse's board committee meetings, an audit committee meeting. In Wapentures, along with you, Madam President, and you, and we had the audit committee meeting. We all, a number of us, look around the board, had the pleasure of going to this very high school's seventy-fifth anniversary this past Saturday. Dr. Bond was there as well, the people that I probably don't even know. That was a wonderful occasion, just a fabulous occasion. And today I actually went on some Bosse's building tours. So those are the things that I had done. Oh, there was one thing that I wanted to mention to the public, that in reviewing some of the policies that we have, this was new to me, it was a surprise, that this board policy, policy, I think it's sixty-one fifteen, where depending on your, it's based on income, but it's a senior discount on your taxes. Now, I just happened to call the town of Poughkeepsie, because that's where I live, and the assessor had told me that it was income-based in the town for up to thirty-five-thousand four hundred dollars is, was the eligibility. And it's a graduated reduction in your taxes up to your income limit. If you make more than that thirty-five thousand four hundred, you're not eligible for it. But that is a discount that's offered, in addition to, we had voted on the, several years ago, the veterans discount, so it's just out there for anybody. Check with your town assessor. Thank you.
Mrs. Laval?
I wanted to thank Mr. Carrion and the rest of the administrative staff who attended and presented Ms. Karath and myself with the new board member orientation. It was very insightful and productive and excellent discussion, very helpful, very professionally done, and I really appreciate the opportunity, and I wanted to thank you all.
Did he give you lunch?
They gave us. I thought you didn't give us lunch.
Breakfast, breakfast.
But it was very informative, very well done, and I genuinely appreciate it and it was a great opportunity to spend time with the administration. That said, I received a great deal of information this week between the orientation, the board retreat, the superintendent's memo, the minutes, sorry, the agenda of the board, and something struck me, and this is, this is not intended to be a criticism, but a suggestion for moving forward. It seems the entire sophomore junior class was super opposite even black, and I guess it's an effort to address racism and bring it into the curriculum. The district is implementing PBIS, we have new transgender accommodation recommendations, or I guess regulations. We are fully proofing, we're working towards fully proofing. We're spending an awful lot of money, I'm sorry, time, attention, money, on behavioral concerns. For the Board of Education, and according to the data, seventy percent of our students are not making the grade. You all know that I don't necessarily agree with the data results, but the fact of the matter is, that's what the data says. There's some validity to the concern, but in any event, when we show as a district, seventy percent of our students are failing, there was New York Post article that said half of the students in New York State did not pass the algebra regions, that our children aren't here to be trained behaviorally, they're here to be educated. And I just would ask that we, as a district and a board, start looking at the genuine educational concerns and start making them a priority. You know, they're not here to be trained behaviorally, they're here to be educated, and we have some glaring concerns, and I think we need to make it a priority and start, you know, make it part of our focus on the agenda items.
Anyone else? Board comments? Well, we had a, I just wanted to add that Mr. Soma was on the audit committee also, and we also welcomed this year's public, public members and swore them in. Lisa Herhely, who was on the committee last year, and Ed Slowshower, who joined in this year. We had a very productive and interesting board retreat on Saturday morning, where Mike Clark, one of our facilitators and professional developers in English Language Arts, did a terrific exercise with all of us. Congratulations to him, and it's good to see what great things are being done with our teachers. We all, a number of us, Mrs. Karath, and Mrs. Pilton, Mr. Lumia, Mr. Rubin, Mr. Soma, we went to the, to the seventy-fifth anniversary at Wapentures Junior High, and Mrs. Laval has needed to rest. I think that was, because we took a tour, we went up, and if you ever get the opportunity, we went up to the clock tower and down in the tunnels. This is a very interesting building. And congratulations to John Jay, we got to cheer them on. Mr. Carrion and Dr. Bond and I saw them beat Arlington, and their behavior was, was really great, too. I mean, we have really good winners and good losers in this district. Of course, it's always nicer to win. Thank you. If there are no more comments from the board, the superintendent's report?
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education. Good evening to the public. I'd like to take this opportunity first. I believe I see many high school students. It will begin, that's right, it'll, this is the time where you start getting your signatures. So, sitting here right now, I just want to congratulate you all, you're all seniors, and this is your last year, make it the best, make it the best, and never hesitate to send me an email or your principals an email if you have any concerns, anything that you'd like to do, we are always there for you. So congratulations once again, and make this your year. They will need signatures, but they'll get it after the meeting. No, a district clerk usually signs. They got signatures already? Great. But, in addition, just quickly, I want, we mentioned the seventy-fifth anniversary here at Wapentures Junior High School. I just want to tell Mr. Thompson, congratulations, you did a fantastic job, and anybody who's been a principal knows firsthand that you're only as great as your team, and that really reflected on Saturday. To see your community, your team, just working, effort, I mean, working and collaborating and running around and making sure that things were going great, that was extremely refreshing. And then to see all of the alumni sitting out and listening to the speeches and the history regarding this beautiful building. Once again, congratulations to you and your team, great job. As far as our superintendent's report, this is a Board of Education meeting, it's not the workshop meeting, so part of the superintendent's report coming to us will be presenting Alan Walters from the Bonadillo Group, and he will provide, be providing us with the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen external audit financial statement. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Walters.
Thank you. My name is Alan Walters, I'm a partner of Bonadillo Group. We are the school district's external auditors.
Sorry, I said Walters, Walter.
You got Bonadillo, right?
That's easy for me.
We are the school district's external auditors. I met with the audit committee last... Is it now? Can you hear me, Alan? Uh, my name is Alan Walters, I'm a partner of Bonadillo Group. We are the school district's external auditors. Last week, I met with the audit committee and reviewed drafts of the financial statements in detail with them. I spent about an hour and fifteen minutes or so on what we reported in great detail. Tonight, I'd just like to give a brief overview of the results of our audit, and then open it up to any questions that the full board might have. Our role as your external auditors is, pre-fold, we issue three reports. We issue an audit report on the financial statements, we issue a report on your internal control and compliance in accordance with government audit standards, and we issue a report on your internal control and compliance in accordance with OMB Circle A one thirty-three, which pertains to the school district's federal funding program. Because the school district receives in excess of five hundred thousand dollars in federal funding each year, we require it at the OMB A one thirty-three audit. The former audit and overall results of audit were that with regard to the financial statements we issued, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, I'll talk a little bit about the, what that means. With regard to internal control over financial reporting, there were no material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies identified. We did have one instance of non-compliance with laws and regulations, that was the school district has in excess of four percent of its subject year's budget in fund balance, the actual number, I think, was five point oh three percent. The state of New York limits that to four percent, so there wasn't one finding there. With regard to federal programs, we issued an unmodified opinion on compliance. We had no material weaknesses or no significant deficiencies, and there were no audit findings that needed to be disclosed in accordance with OMB Circle A one thirty-three. So overall, the results of audit were very favorable, unmodified opinions, no internal control findings, and one, one compliance finding. Your, your audit report that we issued was, as I said, an unmodified opinion, that's the highest level of assurance that we can give on your financial statements, that's what the funding, the rating agencies look for. And just to paraphrase what that opinion says, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly the financial position of Wapentures Junior School District as of June period two thousand and fifteen. Again, that's the highest level of assurance that we can give on the financial statements. For two thousand and fifteen, there were also two significant new accounting standards that the school district needs, needed to implement and make pertaining to recording the asset or liability pertaining to the school district's participation in the New York State employee retirement system and the New York State teachers' retirement system. We spent a great deal of time talking about the effects on the financial statements at the audit committee level those. Those changes only affected your government-wide financial statements, not the fund-level financial statements. And then with regard to the fund-level financial statements, let me give you a brief highlight of the overall results for the year. Fair enough, can I find the page? The general fund highlights, the general fund ended the year with approximately thirty-seven million dollars in total assets, eighteen million four fifty-six in total liabilities, giving a total fund balance of eighteen million three hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Of that, eighteen million three fifty-four total fund balance, two point seven million dollars was non-spendable, the prepaid expenditures that was, that pertained to the health insurance that was paid by the end of June or July. There was three million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars designated for supplement year expenditures, that's the amount that was used to balance the two thousand and sixteen budget. There was a million dollars in commerces, those are budget carryovers from two thousand fifteen to two thousand and sixteen, and the school district has unassigned fund balance of ten million seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. The ten million seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars is the amount that has limited four percent of the budget, that number was actually five percent of the three percent. That's the extent of my comment on the, on the audit. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Alan. I just think that if you could just go a little bit into some, into detail, not detail, but some clarification, because some of this represents commitments, the obligations that the district will have, long-term retirement, et cetera, over, say, forty-plus or so years, and that's reflected in here, but in fact, that's not expenses that we're paying out this year, these are just long, longer-term obligations that are referenced in here. We recognize that they're obligations for the next several decades.
Correct.
And I don't know what, what, what percentage of this we might be looking at to spend over the next year or so, I don't know if you know that or not.
The, as Mr. Rubin indicated, the financial statements, the financial report actually includes two sets of financial statements. There's government-wide financial statements, which is, what that represents is all of the assets and all the liabilities the school district has on a whole-crew method of handling, meaning that you look way into the future to see what your future obligations would be, and to record an estimate of these liabilities. Okay, the most significant future liability that the school district has, and approximately a hundred and fifty-four million dollars, is the school district's public employment benefits obligation. And what that represents is an actuarial calculation estimate of the future amount of money that the school district will have to pay for both its current retirees and all its employees that are predicted to retire and then start to receive benefits. That amount, that hundred and fifty-three million dollars, is really, the way that actuaries do it, is they look at it until that estimated debt of the retirees, and then they spend the discounted back. And those numbers are real, but they will be paid, a hundred and fifty-three million dollars is, you know, due and payable over forty, fifty years. Each year, as the school district does its budget, it accounts for the retiring portion of health insurance within the current budget. Okay, so the school district is funding that, those liabilities on what it happens called a pay-as-you-go method. And further, New York State does not even allow you, you decided you wanted to set aside a reserve fund, you can't, because New York State doesn't allow that. So it is on a pay-as-you-go basis, and the future liabilities are handled that way. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely. I think it's important to know that really shows only one side of the coin, so to speak, because it reflects, and we're obligated to do this under our current standards, it reflects whether we perceive our long-term obligations, responsibilities to pay out will be over the next forty or fifty-plus years or so. But it does not, we're not allowed to report what our anticipated income will be over that, so it's kind of a one-sided coin here. And that's why I asked for just what we're, what we're looking at, we're funding over the next year or so. Thank you.
And it also should be added as well, if those are contractual obligations written into your contracts. Any other questions?
You said you have a five percent, or one percent above, were we allowed?
Yeah.
Go into that a little bit more.
The, okay, the, the five percent fund balance, what New York State allows school districts, all school districts, to carry over four percent of their subject year's budget as undeserved, undesigned, okay? So your, your budget in two thousand and sixteen is approximately two hundred and ten million dollars, four percent of that would be a little bit over eight million dollars.
A little bit ten million bucks. So we're pretty shake, in other words. So we're in pretty good shape, in other words.
You have more than the state said that you can.
Are there any penalties associated with having more than you're supposed to?
They will, no. I mean, they're not going to come and ask for the money back, though they will send a letter to the administration, and the administration will have to track the action.
Will that have any effect on the money that we will be receiving this year from the state?
No. It's a, it's a pretty common finding with our school financial.
Well, that isn't common, because you're always been under the, below the 4%. I think we're in good shape. Years ago, when I first got on the board, we were at 2%, I believe it was, and now that's amounted to 5%, which is, that's pretty good.
I understood from when you were speaking at the audit committee meeting that it's almost impossible to hit exactly 4% and that, you know, districts will be under or over because, of course, making a budget, you need some fund balance for contingencies, and you can never predict them exactly. Is that correct?
Yeah.
But it's good to be above.
Oh, yes. Definitely. Better than below.
Any other questions?
Fred.
Thank you.
Consent agenda resolution?
Thank you. Ms. Hardeman is not here tonight, so please forgive me if I don't do this exactly right. I will take out. Regarding the consent agenda, resolve that the Board of Education does-
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said, was there anyone who wanted to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Okay.
No? All right. Go ahead.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated. 6.02-
Do we need a motion? Yes, we need a, we need a motion. Okay. Could we have a motion? Yes. Mr. Somer. Mr. Somer moved, and we need a second. Mrs. Lavalle.
Now it's my turn?
Yes. Thank you. That was my fault.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated. 6.02, as amended, is that how it's said?
No, you start with 6.01.
I don't have 6.01 online.
No. We don't have the other 6.01.
I'm sorry, 6.02.
6.02 as amended. 6.03 as amended. 6.04, 6.05, 6.06 as amended. 6.07, 6.08, 6.09, 6.10, and 6.11.
All in favor? Seven. 7.01, approval of the corrective action plan.
So move.
Second. Mr. Somer. That was moved by Mr. Ruben, seconded by Mr. Somer. Do you want to move?
Well, it's approval, resolve, may I just say, resolved as noted, because I want to pull it.
Okay. We want to discuss it, but you can read it and then we'll discuss it.
Read it. Do I have to read all of it?
Yes.
Okay. That's 7.02, approval of the public role of the board-
No, no, it's 7.01.
7.01, excuse me. 7.01, excuse me. Approval of the correction action plan. Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the correction action plan in response to the state comptroller's fuel accountability report of examination 2.015 and -135, as indicated in a memo dated August 28, 2015, with supporting documentation from the school business manager to the superintendent of schools.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven. 7.02, approval of public role on board committees. Do we have? Yes. Do you want?
What's that?
No, motion to-
The motion before the discussion.
Hold on.
Do we need a motion before he, okay. All right. Motion? Mr. Somer, second. Mrs. Lavalle, discussion.
I would like to pull this entirely not tabled. I would like to call, the policy committee may or may not decide to review that, but I'd like this pulled.
All right. Okay.
So I make a motion to have a pull.
You make a motion to pull it, to pull it-
Motion to withdraw.
Motion to withdraw. Is there a second? Mrs. Pelton. All in favor? Seven. Thank you. 8.01, approval of external annual financial statements. We have a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Lumia, second. Mrs. Karab, discussion. Would you like to read it first for us? Thank you.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby accept the annual audit and financial statements from the Bonadillo Group for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015, as presented to the Board of Education.
Any discussion? All those in favor? 8.02, appointment of impartial hearing officer. Student ID 1004348. We have a motion? Mr. Ruben, second. Mr. Lumia, discussion. All in favor? Seven. 8.03, appointment of impartial hearing officer. Student ID 34307. Motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Mr. Somer? Would you read it? Mr. Ruben?
8.03.
Yes.
Resolve that the Board of Education does hereby appoint Mr. James Walsh to serve as the impartial hearing officer in the case of student number 34307.
All those in favor? Second? Oh, no, sorry. Seven. My fault. Okay. All right. Request for additions to the agenda. I'd like to add the item of our representative to the PTA council. Mrs. Hardeman informed me today that she's unable to continue because of job commitments. So do we have a motion to add that to the agenda? Mr. Lumia, second. Mr. Somer? Do we have any volunteers?
I'll volunteer.
Or nominations, either way.
I would volunteer. Do you know when they meet?
They meet different days, different months. In the second Thursday more often than others, but there are also Tuesdays and Wednesdays involved. I think they try and move it around to make-
Just asking, because Bowse's typically, it's a Wednesday, I'm responsible for that. And of course, this board meeting, but there's other evenings, that's fine.
All right. All right. Are there any other volunteers or nominations? Okay. Yes, Mr. Carrion.
Maybe volunteer two people with the PTA-
That would be great. Okay. And somebody else I could use, too? All right. Thank you, Mrs. Lavalle. All right? Okay. Are there any others? And of course, everyone is welcome to attend then. So even if the whole board goes, it's all right. All right? But these would be our official voting members. All right? All right.
So we have, we have two voting members or one? Well, only with one.
Yeah. Well, the two of you can discuss if decide who's going to vote at any given meeting if possible. Only one of you is there. If there were two of you, I hope you agree. If not, you have a handful of each, I guess.
I was just wondering.
Right. No, no, no. I think that's it. Mrs. Pedro.
Can you sit back a little bit?
Yes, Mrs. Pedro.
Do I have a motion to add an item to the agenda made by Mr. Lumia, second and third Mr. Somer? Do I have a vote on that?
Okay. Vote to add the item. I'm silent. All right. Seven, yes.
Now I need a motion and a second.
All right. Could we have a motion to have Mr. Ruben and Mrs. Lavalle as our representatives? Mr. Lumia, and a second. Mr. Somer. All those in favor? Seven. Thank you. Are there any other additions to the agenda? All right. Okay. Communications from the public. At this time, the same rules as at the beginning apply, except that you can speak on any subject that you choose that is relevant and does not involve individuals.
Lower it. Lower it.
Hello, my name is Sunshine. I'm a special community member. I also have a problem with the bus. My problem is the bus, but it's been three important days since we've seen together and finally it's been, it's been a while since we've been together since we've been together since we've been together. And we can never help but see this is a very strange, and while this is a road to travel, we have four seats for two days, and this is four also, and more than six is on the bus than anyone else. This is a problem that needs to be addressed.
Fifth graders than sixth graders on the bus, there's a seating problem at work. I was trying to explain. Ed Slowshower, again, let's go. What is the status of the legislative action committee that was approved during the reorganization meetings? I have provided the board committee members with an outline through charter for that said committee. When can we, when can we begin work on that and our fight against the unconstitutional amendment? Global foundry that appears will be paying the same amount of tax as per the IBM pilot agreement as stated in a recent Poughkeepsie Journal article. This amount is roughly $8.3 million. Based on my calculations, the district will receive anywhere from $6.1 to $6.2 million of that for school tax. Can this crumble confirm this? Also, will the town of East Fishville receive that tax payment on time? The district has hired roughly 24 new teachers this year and hired and/or created several new administrative positions. Can the board please provide the public the breakdown of these new hires? How many were due through retirement? How many were due through resignations? I would like to see how much money was spent for these positions on a spreadsheet to compare the cost before and after. Since we have the new organizational chart, was there an increase? Was there no increase, or the numbers are washed? And exactly where did we get the money paid for these three grades? I would also like to see a presentation from each of the new district office administrators on what their vision is for the district. Are they going to follow our existing game plan? What new ideas are they planning to bring to the district to improve the quality of education for our children? We would like to hear from them. Can the board members who voted to approve the new district position of public relations director, please explain to the public why this was done, considering we already have the public relations person? Perhaps the board is unaware of this, but let me explain it briefly. Administration, Section 3000, Number 3120, from the policy manual. The superintendent shall supervise the public relations activities of the district. He or she shall keep the community informed about school matters. He or she shall act as a consultant to the community to improve the educational opportunities for both children and adults. Were any of you aware of this policy? Did anybody read the duties of the superintendent policy? So you voted to add an additional $109,000 plus benefits for a position that already exists. Where is your fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of this community? Can you please provide us with an explanation for your actions? And when does the education of our children become a priority of this board and the committee?
Could we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Somer, second. Mrs. Pelton, all in favor? Seven. Thank you.